Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Report of posting agenda, please, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted here at City Hall on Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Thank you. First item for our attention is the approval of the minutes of May 14th. I believe we have a couple of abstentions that are required.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Matthews and Mr. Grinch were absent. You're in your standing. If those remaining are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. First item on our agenda is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the Commission on Planning Issues in the City of Palm Springs, please come forward at this time. If you are here on an agendated item, we would prefer that you hold your comments until that item is called. You may speak now if you prefer. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Our public hearings are a notice for two o'clock, so we'll move down on the agenda to architectural approval, item number six, case 3.2230, the application by Wendell Weith for Stephen Thuringer for modification of an architectural approval in order to raise pad heights for single-family residents located at 254 Overlook. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you an overview, this is a previously approved application. This was something that was caught in naturally grading plan check. If you look at the grading plan here, well, this is sort of flipped around, but this is Overlook Road at the bottom, there's the guest house dislocation, driveway, the garage, and the main residence actually exists on about two levels, so this is sort of the second pad and then the third pad. The lot itself naturally slopes upward that way, you can see in the photograph over here. In considering this, staff looked at how we typically measure building height, which is average top of pavement, and we found that was 461 approximately, and also the adjacent pad heights. In this case, it was 474 to the lot in this location where there is an approved single-family residence, an existing residence here at 464, and also at this location is about 473. We circulated a courtesy notice to all the adjacent property owners for comment, received two comments. One neighbor, you know, certainly didn't mind the increase in pad height, another neighbor was concerned because of the mass of the house already increasing the height or the pad elevation anymore. So what they've proposed, the original pad elevation for the guest house and the garage was 463. In this case, they proposed to lower the guest house to 462 and a half and increase the garage to 463 and a half, so an increase about half a foot for the garage. And then for the second pad elevation, it was originally 465, they're increasing that by one and a half feet, and the same thing for the third. So staff's recommendation, you know, we don't really see a reason why the pad heights would need to be increased by a foot and a half, but that is our recommendation, and certainly the applicant would be happy to answer your questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Mr. Schoenberger.
What is staff's recommendation?
To approve the previously approved pad heights.
And to reject this application to increase the pad heights. Do you understand it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody in the audience who'd like to address us on this matter? Mr. Weith.
Mr. Chairman, Wendell Weith. I'm joint managing with Raul Sosa on this project, Post Office Box 1950 Palm Springs. The reason we're asking for this is twofold. We found when we got into the grading on it that the natural, the existing grade is about the pad height on the back that we are asking for, so that would be a substantial cut on this lot. Plus, we felt that the impact, because of the two-tiered effect of the guest house in the front and the house in the back, we wanted to get up the pad on the back so we could get a little better view out on the valley. The house on the right doesn't have any openings at all to this house, and the only impact would maybe be the one at the back, but I think we're only 17 feet high, and so we felt that grading-wise it would be easier for us to do this and not have to move a lot of dirt, and we felt the impact architecturally would be better, and that's why we're asking for this revision. So we're lowering down the front end and raising up the back end just to give us a little better architectural feel, and we didn't feel it was going to impact because the grade on the back lot wouldn't be impacted that much. That's the reason why we would like to have it.
Very good. Is there any questions to Mr. Weith while he's at the podium? Thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak on this matter? Back to Commissioner then. Comments, questions, motions? Ms. Conrad?
I guess, maybe this is a question for the applicant. Would you be willing to just hold the height of the building at the same height, basically drop your plate a foot and a half, so that you wouldn't have to do the grading, so that it doesn't come up and affect your neighbors? I mean, I think your argument that you move less dirt is somewhat persuasive, but it's a huge building.
There is a very much, on the back side, we have some tile, but it's not, it goes into a parapet situation. So we're trying to maintain a 10-foot plate height on the back end, and then the middle is up to 12 off of that pad, but that's why we don't, we just have tile on the back end that goes up to a parapet, as you can see on the elevations. It'd be a little tough for us to hold it down, that foot and a half down, but we don't have any equipment up on the roof, we just have some stuff there, so I guess we could compromise and, you know, hold it down a little bit, try to hold it down a little bit. I don't know if we can hold it down the whole foot and a half, but maybe we could give you, you know, eight or nine inches or something like that, or a foot, maybe.
Doug, do you think that could work?
I was working on another item on today's agenda, so I, could you ask, ask me the question again?
Thanks a lot, Doug.
Works for him. Works for him.
Say yes. I was saying that I thought that possibly the argument that disturbing less dirt is possibly persuasive, and do you think staff would accept a compromise in dropping the plate height, maybe not a whole foot and a half, but dropping the plate height so he could raise the pad and still not achieve the whole building coming up and affecting the neighbors? I mean, since you've got a lot of play, if it's a 10-foot plate up to a 12-foot plate, you could drop that a foot, and then maybe we could compromise on the grading.
We would probably not have an objection on the height of the house not changing, and the reason we recommended that you not approve this change is the house to the north looks this way. They both were reviewed at the same time at preliminary stages, so we looked at both pad elevations to gain a comfort level, so we were reviewing literally through the process both houses almost at the same time. And we just felt that, you know, at this late stage to come in and raise up the back was really inappropriate, but if the plate height issue, I mean, the issue is the height of the structure, not the ground.
Right.
Yeah.
So...
I'll listen from here on out.
So I think that might be, I think that's the end that staff is trying to achieve, not trying to force you to grade more.
Well, we could, we could look at that and see if it works that way. If it doesn't, then we have to kick it down.
You want to make a motion then in the alternative?
I move that we deny, where are we here? Oh, we deny case number 3.2230 and recommend that staff and the applicant study not changing the height of the building and come back to us with a compromise.
Go ahead, Mr. Grinch. I was going to suggest, you want to make a second?
I'll second, but I'll hold off you.
Perhaps we can do this so that it doesn't have to come back to us, and just, if, tell me if I'm reading your thoughts.
Absolutely.
That you, that you deny the application as requested, but that in the alternative you indicate that they can raise the pad height, the one and a half feet that they request, on condition that they drop the overall height of the building by at least half of that. Let's just say eight by nine inches, and that'll have the effect of only a nine-inch adjustment. And if they can't accomplish that task, then they will have to stick with the approved pad height.
Okay.
Does that embody what you were trying to say?
I should have said that.
Okay.
Although I probably would like to leave the discretion to the director about how much, it should be at least half, it should come down at least by half.
We're going to ask that they keep the height of the house the same.
Okay.
I don't want somebody to move into a brand-new house or build a house, and all of a sudden the view that they designed for, because they were both worked on at the same time, to be different and have to explain that to them during construction. It gets real interesting in the field on hillside houses if there's any changes in assumptions.
Okay, well, I think...
If that's the case, if you want to follow staff's recommendations, then the motion that I just articulated is not sufficient.
I guess I would deny case number 3.2230, and in the alternative, encourage the applicant to come back to staff, and if they can't, if they can accomplish the pad height elevation by keeping the height of the house the same, that they could have that and not have to come back to us.
I'll second that.
Do you totally understand that, Doug?
And any previous motions are withdrawn or...
Yes, okay.
Okay. You have a motion by Ms. Conrad, a second by Mr. Grinch. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is number seven, miscellaneous case 5.0909, application by Brad Corson for review and approval of street improvement plans pursuant to conditional use permit for incidental commercial uses located within the hotel containing less than 100 rooms at the Australia Inn located at 415 South Polardo Road. Staff report, please.
Yes, this item has been continued at the request of the applicant. They're requesting that this be agendized for the meeting of June 25.
Would you suggest that we make a formal motion?
If you'd be so kind.
Okay, we will entertain a motion to continue this matter at the request of the applicant to June 25. That was moved by Mr. Grinch, seconded by Ms. Morantz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have item number eight, case 5.0870, application by Ernest Noe on behalf of Lawrence Joseph Bowe, Leonard Charles Bowe, Arthur W. Diaz Jr., and Belinda Sue Short for a time extension for preliminary plan development district, including a 500-room resort hotel, 200 vacation units, 500,000 square feet of retail business park and office spaces, and an 18-hole golf course on 273-acre site at the intersection of Crosley Road and Mesquite Avenue. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is an item that the Commission did approve approximately two years ago. We briefed you in study session on some changes that are being done, so I think you know the reason the applicant needs to make the changes. We do recommend approval of this time extension, and we'll certainly try and answer any questions the Commission has.
Any questions or discussion? Does anybody wishes to speak on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of the time extension for case 5.0870, PDD 268.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Schoenberger. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is number nine, tentative track map, excuse me, 29788, application by Barbara Foster Henderson for a time extension for tentative track map for a four-lot and one remainder lot subdivision on 4.71 gross acres of land with lots arranging in size from .67 acres to 1.03 acres located between Ramon Road and Sunny Dunes Road west of La Marada Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We recommend approval of this time extension. It's a project that they're working on the final map. They've worked on and completed a lot line adjustment to clarify one of the property lines, and we think there's merit for the time extension. It's a good subdivision that I think we'll see some homes on in the near future. That completes our report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any comments?
Move approval of the time extension.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Morantz, second by Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda for consideration is the Commission Work Program. Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commission, Mr. Commission, Mr. Chairman. You can tell I'm distracted today. The general plan program that we're working on, Larry is working on coordinating a steering committee meeting for the latter part of June, and we're in the process of trying to book rooms for that. We have probably 19 or so of the 21 steering committee positions filled with a couple of other interest groups ready to nominate people probably within the week, so that's moving along, and we're going to, you know, really start the group as a working group. We'll obviously give them a copy of the general plan and expect everybody to read it diligently, study the map, and also we'll start with a questionnaire so we really have people walk into the room with ideas about what's important for the community before we've actually started the updating process, so we get people's fresh and candid ideas, and then over time we'll see how those change relative to information. But we really want the group to start as a working group and not a group that just comes to meetings, so that's what we're working on relative to the general plan. Section 14 Master Plan, Mr. Chairman, we are getting some final things worked out, and we'll get that public hearing schedule probably in, to the Commission in July. And then with regards to the Tocqueens Creek Resort Subcommittee, the Council approved an agreement. We provided that to the subcommittee members, and we're awaiting John Raymond to call a meeting for that subcommittee. That completes our work program update. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's go on to City Council actions update, please.
Thank you very much. The City Council this evening has some regular business to attend to. They're going to do the assessment district decision-making and setting of hearings relative to the Mountain Gate subdivision map, which is under construction. It's an acquisition district, something that we've contemplated all along, and we're looking forward to the Council's review of that tonight. They will also take a look at the final map as well as a final map for the Canyon Vista Project down at Sierra and South, or Murray Canyon Drive, that's the timeshare project. And they are moving forward and getting fairly close to a building permit on that project, so it's moving forward. Other items on the Council's agenda tonight in study session, they're going to talk about the National Monument, we're going to give them a briefing, we've given you the written briefing, we'll go over that tonight with the Monument staff member. They'll also talk about tourism, the Convention Center, and a few other items on their agenda. No other planning items for the Council meeting tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. It's now past two o'clock, so we'll go to our public hearings. First item is Agenda Item Number Two, case 6.469 and 3.2321, the application by Ronald and Rebecca Williams for a variance in architectural approval to reduce setbacks on a substandard lot and build a professional office building with bay parking at 4375 Calle de Ricardo. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Gabriel Diaz will give this staff report.
Thank you, Chairman, and Commissioners. According to the staff report, they, they were, they wanted to decrease the parking, and staff recommended that they comply with the standard parking for a professional office, and we currently now have 33, 33 spaces. They have added an additional row on this side of the building. Originally, there was no parking on this side. This building is located just south of the airport and Ramon. This is professional all the way through there, professional to the west and to the east and to the north. All these lots are empty. There has been a significant improvement in this neighborhood. There used to be an old apartment building that was run down and has been recently torn down in the neighborhood. This would add to the recently approved social security building on this corner of Paseo, Dortia, and Ramon, and there's the adjacent neighbor to the east, northeast, is Animal, Animal, Animal Hospital. Currently...
Excuse me, Mr. Diaz. I think after looking at the map, I realize I'm very close to 500 feet, so I'm going to abstain from this because I have a building there. Thank you.
Okay. The substandardness of this lot, according to the P-zone requirement, is that you require 25 feet all the way around, fronting a street. This lot is very narrow in depth, the depth is 83 feet, and per the P-zone requirement, you need 150 feet, and makes it very hard to build on the lot. They are way under on percentage for building. The zone requires 60 percent, or allows 60 percent, and the building coverage is at 31 percent, which is half. The 6,452-square-foot building complies with the parking now. There are seven compact spaces, and it does meet the code requirement, they're under 40 percent. The building height, one of the variances also is that in the rear, you must have 20 feet, they have 10, but the architect has accommodated that by stepping the building from, here's a good, good, the east and west elevations. The neighbors, there are two single-family residents in the rear. This section here is all single-family homes, so, and they're older homes. So from property line to building, you have a 12-foot-high structure 10 feet away from property line. This, this single-family residence, I think, is about 23 from property line, so they're about 30 feet away from the actual building. And the, the applicant has used, what do you use, yellow oleanders, which are fast-growing bushes and trees that can turn into trees, and acacias in the rear to block, block the view of a wall. The ultimate height of the building is 20 feet, but the 20 feet is measured from this architectural feature. The columns, this column sticks out 19 feet, one of the other zone requirements, the 25-foot setback for a building, it's encroaching up to 19 feet, and then it steps back to 20 feet for these columns, and then the actual main building is actually 25 feet back. And here, they're using plaster and metal for metal roof overhangs for architectural, and that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The, if the applicant doesn't bring it up, I'll prompt them, they need to discuss the power lines on the south property line, because there's going to be shared overhead service with homes to the south. They'd be very difficult underground, and we'd probably have to defer by covenant, but the Commission needs to do that.
And the recommendation of staff in the, in the current report is that they...
Engineering recommendation is to underground.
Just underground.
Unless the Commission deals with it today. There's, there's no way they could pull off the undergrounding of that short of a run. It's just, it's not feasible technically nor with the adjoining property owners in all likelihood.
All right. This is a public hearing item. Anybody wishing to address the Commission, please come forward at this time, give us your name, and please sign the clipboard before you leave. Thank you.
My name's Paul St. John. I live at 4410 Calle de Carlos.
I'm sorry, what was your last name again, please?
St. John.
Thank you.
I'm here about the parking and also about the setback. I do feel it should remain a 20-foot setback. They want to reduce their parking from, what, 35 to 28, right across the street from them where the Animal Hospital is. Apparently, they don't have nearly enough parking because eight to 10 cars every week they are parked right on the street there. I guess they're employee parking because they don't have room for the employees. What, I'd also like to know what type of office or professional work is going to be done in these offices. Anyone know what type of business it is?
Sir, this is not typically a question and answer. You'll have an opportunity to make your comments, and perhaps the staff will be able to respond when we close the public hearing.
Very good. The reason I ask, I'd like to try to determine how many employees are going to be working there during the week, and how many in-and-out traffickers going to be. I wouldn't like to see the same situation occur at this new project that has occurred across the street at the Animal Hospital. The parking there is just pathetic. Matter of fact, I believe they should probably be concerned about the number of employees and the people that are going to be coming and going. I just can't see cutting the parking. There's no place for the cars to park except maybe go around the corner on the street, because the street right now is filled with the people that work at the Animal Hospital, and that 20-foot setback should remain. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. St. John.
My name's Andy Canovin. I own the property at 4350 Calle de Carlos, and I am opposed to the setback for three reasons, changing it from 20 feet to 10 feet. My privacy, I'm the center lot of the three houses that have bought the property from the rear. Privacy, property value, and precedent. I think it's a bad precedent to set. I have a letter from the neighbor across the street that I'd prefer not to read because I'm too nervous, so if somebody else wants to read it, he too is opposed to those two of the five variances. We don't have a problem with the other three, but we hope you vote down the setback and the reduction of parking. the reduction of parking.
Hi, I'm Alan Sandborn, uh, Sandborn A&amp;E, representing the owner, Ron Williams, on this, uh, project. Um, first off, I'd like to request a covenant for the undergrounding of the power lines. Um, if that's the proper thing to do at this time. Um, the, uh, as staff said, we have submitted a revised site plan, which conforms to the parking requirement, so, um, I believe we've sort of satisfied that, uh, problem with the site and, uh, met the parking requirements. Uh, it's a very difficult site in this, to have a, a P-zone. If, uh, if you met all the, the, um, setbacks required for the zone, I think you have a thirty-foot-deep building, if that. Uh, so it's, it's a very tough, uh, site. So we've tried to design it the best. Uh, we've put, um, uh, basically very little, um, if any, uh, access, uh, to the rear of the building, other than just a little covered patio and some light windows, uh, to the rear of the building, but everything else is pretty much, um, there's no walkway, there's no circulation back there at all, just landscaping and, and the buildings. So to try to keep as much privacy for the neighbors as we, you know, as we can. And, uh, look forward to a favorable vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandborn. Just to clarify, you are withdrawing your request with regard to the parking?
Yeah, we submitted a revised, uh, the condition.
All right. Anybody else? So unanimous, we'll close the public hearing. Back to commission. Ms. Marantz?
Well, I, after having gone by the area, think that it's, it's been a while since there's been anything new built in that area and since there's a twelve-foot-high wall, it's gonna separate that area. I certainly, as long as they meet the parking requirements and are willing to, uh, enter into a covenant for the undergrounding of the utilities at some future time, I'm, I don't have a problem with the project.
Any comments? Mr. Schoenberger?
Excuse me, excuse me. I stand corrected. Yeah, the, the wall is six feet, the building is only twelve feet.
Yeah, I, I think, um, uh, if, if there's a six-foot wall there and there are oleanders, um, uh, along the wall and we have a ten-foot setback, but the, there's no, uh, uh, there's no access to the setback, other than just, uh, uh, the patios as, as mentioned. And, uh, we have the height reduced to minimize the, uh, the, um, the variance on the setback, um, although I certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors. I, I don't think that that circumstance will create a, um, an invasion of their privacy in any signi- to, to any significant degree. And I, and I think the, the, the benefits of the, of this, um, of this building, uh, I think it will help the neighborhood. I think it will help the property values of the neighbors, make this, uh, uh, and help this, uh, neighborhood. Um, so I think the, in, in my mind, the benefits outweigh, um, the, uh, the negative impact of the, of the setback. And I think from a practical standpoint, uh, we're gonna have to compromise on that setback anyway to, 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 to accommodate a viable project on that site, uh, because of the, uh, configuration of the lot. I, I would ask though, just for the benefit of the neighbors, i- if we know what, um, uh, the professional use of the property will be. Do we know who's gonna be there? Or what kind of tenants are gonna be there?
Uh, currently, currently, I do not know, but is, if we calculated at, uh, office space, uh, we know that there, uh, they talked about the animal hospital and that was a conditional use permit. This is a by right-of-zone office building.
Yeah. Yes, I just got, I think, the signal from the, the applicant that they don't have tenants lined up for the building yet. Um, but typically, if I could just make a little, brief little comment, um, one of the things that we looked at was if this were to develop as two different lots with the gaps between the buildings, um, I think what the, the benefit of this proposal is you have a continuous building line that buffers it from Ramon Road and the airport. Now, obviously not the, the air traffic above, but the ground traffic, uh, when the airplanes are taxiing. And they'll probably find that their backyards are quieter and they'll also probably find that they, they have a little bit less wind on those breezy days when the wind's coming from the northwest. Um, and that, those were two considerations that, that we looked at when we looked at it, um, in addition to the, the information we put in the staff report. Uh, Mr. Chairman, on the, the action of the commission, you, you could note that they withdrew the applicant, uh, request for the variance or just adopt the resolution the way it is because they're in compliance with it now.
Right. Well, w- with that, uh, unless, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the application, uh, including a covenant for a later undergrounding of the power, power lines. Um, a- and I think that's all we need in the motion, unless somebody has something else in mind.
Sir, a second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Mr. Second, uh, by Mr. Schoenberger Second, by Mr. Grinch. I had a question of staff. Um, I had some concern about the landscaping, uh, especially with the bay parking and, uh, across the front. If I read the landscape plan correctly, it, it says that there's only two feet of mounding with low ground cover and some palm trees and, you know, obviously the palm trees are just, uh, you know, narrow trunks going up. This is gonna give the appearance of just being a naked building with, with a few palm trees around it. I, I don't know what, uh, whether the, um, design review had any comments on that or whether staff had any comments on that?
Well, actually, there, there are some canopy trees, you know, adjacent to the parking along the south side of the building. Obviously, at the bay parking area, uh, you only have trees, you know, on the ends in the center, but I think it'll have a pretty good feel.
Does it have, are there canopy trees on the north side of the building as well, on that corner?
On the corner, there are some palm trees and then around the parking lot, they've got canopy trees.
Oh, there are some.
I, I, it looks like they've got five canopy trees in that area with the palms on the corner, if I'm reading the plan correctly from here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I also am concerned that maybe, the Japanese oleander grows very fast and it's pretty, but maybe there could be a few taller trees in the back. And I wanted to point out, I'm very sympathetic to the neighbors and I wanted to point out to you that the building, in order to get those extra parking places, he dropped the building size from seventy-five-hundred square feet to sixty-four-hundred square feet. And I do agree that one building is much preferable to two. And the building height being twelve feet, ten feet back, I think probably the average height of your homes is probably taller.
Fifteen and a half.
So, so, um, I think it is gonna impact you, but, but probably, uh, not in as negative a way as you imagine, so.
Any further comments? Roll call vote then, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Marantz?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Klachko?
All right, motion carries, uh, five-zero with one abstention. And if we can invite Mr. Matthews back in, we'll move on down. Next item, number three, case... Case three-point-two-three-four-nine and tentative tract map thirty-one-two-fifty-six, application by Dennis Freeman for Alejo Caballeros LLC for a tentative tract map and architectural approval to build fourteen two-story condominiums on seven building, and in seven buildings at the southwest corner of Alejo Road and Avenida Caballeros. And that's at, uh, nine-seventy-seven Alejo Road East. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a by right-of-zone architectural approval project, which is kind of nice to have. We, we don't get them very often because we're, we're really working primarily on the infill lots that have been picked over over the years and they're tougher to build upon. But this particular project is by right-of-zone and so far as the, uh, property development standards, the number of units, type of units and the like, so there's no real issues to address there. Uh, it's a one lot, or it's a subdivision map, excuse me, that, uh, would allow for the sale of the individual units as condominiums and then all of the, uh, adjoining, uh, and onsite development. Uh, you've got a pretty thorough staff report. Uh, they, as I said, they indicate, comply or exceed all code requirements. And with that quick overview, I'll show you the plans. The, uh, property is located on the corner of Alejo and Caballeros. Uh, fee parcel, kind of an unusual parcel in section fourteen, that, that most people even, you know, even the staff forgot that it was a fee parcel. Uh, they're gonna come back in and put the street improvements in to match up with the adjoining property to the west. And, uh, the street improvements on Caballeros will still have a gap, um, down to the existing condominium development. Uh, the site photographs are shown here, not much really to look at, uh, on the site today. And again, a, a fourteen-unit condominium project, main access on Alejo and then another secondary access point, uh, coming over to Caballeros, which they prefer to have as emergency access. Um, you know, if, in final development plans, they'd like to make that an exit. Uh, I don't think we would be adverse to it. An entryway doesn't work because of the setback to the gate. The individual units are a combination of, uh, one and two-story. Yeah, it's shown here in perspective drawing and then, uh, over here in actual elevation form, uh, was very well received at design review. Uh, the landscape plan is shown here with an entry and then perimeter landscaping, uh, with some typicals shown and a conceptual idea. Uh, it was very well reviewed. We did talk a little bit about paving patterns and things of that nature, so I would expect the paving pattern to maybe be a bit more contemporary, uh, when we actually get into the final development plans. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing for the subdivision map purposes primarily, uh, but obviously the public can comment on the architectural approval application also. That completes our report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Doug, we, we had a, uh, study session on this. Were there any, uh, material changes, uh, in the project since we've viewed it at the study session?
No, I think you've, you saw essentially these exhibits and, you know, there's gonna be a little bit of refinement here and there in final development plans and that's something that we'll watch for, uh, in plan check.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the commission, uh, on this matter, please come forward at this time. Give us your name and please sign the clipboard before you leave.
Hi, my name's Dennis Freeman and I'm here, if you have any questions, uh, just want to let you know I was in the audience.
Thanks, Mr. Freeman. There may be some after we close the hearing.
My name is Larry McNeil. I live at three-five-five North Avenida Caballeros. The condominium, inner condominium complex is just south of this proposed development. I, I have a question. I did not understand, uh, in the original, uh, comments or presentation, was something about the road leaving off and there was going to be a gap or something. How does this plan sit next to the existing Center Court Club? Could you clarify, please?
Uh, Ms. McNeil, we don't normally have a question and answer during public comments. After the close of public comments, perhaps staff will be able to respond to your question.
Thank you.
Don't be shy, ma'am, come forward.
Hello, I'm Biff Roach and I am an owner at Center Court Club, which is directly south of the proposed development. Uh, my condominium faces north, the end, uh, unit, and I am, the, the best view I have is from my front patio, looking into the mountains toward the pass. And I am concerned about how close the buildings are going to be to the current, um, uh, wall that's there, and I just would like to voice my concern about me looking at a two-story building instead of the mountains. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Does anybody else would like to address the commission?
Just for a little clarification for the people who just...
Why don't you go ahead, since you didn't really make any comments before, Mr. Freeman?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. Uh, one, we have two-and-a-half acre site between us and your adjoining project, so there's vacant land between. We're on the corner, there's a two-and-a-half acre piece between us and you, so it's vacant.
Even with my trifocals, I can't see too well.
She can...
Thank you then. Does anybody else that wishes to address us on this matter?
I'd just like to clarify one thing, if I could.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Evans made a comment that it would be an emergency o- exit only on Caballeros. It's actually an exit only for the project. It's not emergency only. It's ultimately gonna be a right turn out on Caballeros. There will be an island, medians, residents will be able to use that exit.
So you'll have two entrances and exits?
Correct.
One, one entrance from Alejo, exit only on Caballeros. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further speakers, then we'll close the public comments. And, Mr. Evans, perhaps before we, uh, have discussion, you can just, uh, go over a little bit about the separation between this development and the, uh, Center Court Club property to the south and, and the distance between them.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I didn't double-check the distance, but what we did, uh, while the other speakers spoke, we showed, uh, the, uh, neighbor's, uh, copy of an aerial photograph that shows the subject property, uh, and then the gap of undeveloped property and then the Center Court condominiums. So there's, uh, a real good gap. It's a little bit larger than the project site, so there's, there's a pretty good gap in there. Uh, I would suspect, once this project's built, uh, you'd almost have to, to get up on your tiptoes and look over the wall to see it because it's gonna be, you know, a couple hundred feet away.
And perhaps you could also comment on the, uh, developer's, uh, indication that the, uh, the southern, or I guess the eastern, uh, access will be an exit out as opposed to fire, or is that something, uh, that's, that's fixed at this point?
No, we're, we're comfortable with that being an exit. It, it doesn't have enough setback to the gates to be an entryway, but if it's set up as an exit and designed that way, that, that would be fine. It'd actually make for better circulation.
Thank you. Commissioners? Yes, Ms. Conrad?
I, I just have one comment for staff, maybe in final, um, development drawings. You can look at the terminus, the western terminus of the interior road, 'cause it seems a little abrupt and I'm sure you're gonna do something that will, will make it nice and it's, it's more for the salability of the project, which I'm sure will be instant anyway. But that would be the one design feature I think could use some attention.
We will do that.
Schoenberger?
I don't have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you...
Mr. Chairman, I approve of case three-point-two-three-four-nine and the tentative tract map three-one-two-five-six, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Marantz. Any further comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Marantz?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
Mr. Klachko?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Freeman. Okay, the next item for consideration is number four, which is case five-point-zero-six-six-six, application by Pat Blue, PS Investment Company LLC for a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from business industrial to low-desity residential and from low-desity res- low-density residential to medium-desity res- density residential for eight dwelling units per acre and medium-high-desity residential to allow preliminary planned development district for mixed-use project composed of an eighteen-hole golf course, a driving range, including related uses and golf expansion area, four-hundred-and-fifty hotel and vacation ownership... area, 450 hotel and vacation ownership units and related visitor servicing area, retail uses, support facilities, and 1,450 residential units, including single-family and multiple-family homes, on a one-acre, excuse me, and a one-acre fire station site, a tentative parcel map for financing purposes, and a request to vacate the westerly 15 feet of an existing 40-foot wide right-of-way adjacent to the project on San Joaquin Drive, all on approximately 460 acres of the southeast corner of Vista Chino and Gene Autry Trail. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have to abstain on that matter. Our law firm represents a party who has an interest in the land on which this project is scheduled to be built, so I'll need to abstain.
Thank you, Mr.-
And also, I think this is the last matter on our agenda, and unless there's some reason anybody wants me to stay, I'll leave.
We'll consider this an excused absence. Mr. Schoenberger, go ahead. That's why we moved through all the other items so quickly, just to accommodate you. Are there any other abstentions or rushed to the door? All right, staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a little different type of project than you're normally used to. This is primarily a land development project with a master plan concept. It's not really a set of development plans that you typically look at where you see projects and all the buildings designed. So what you're essentially approving is a master development plan with property development standards, and all the future development comes back for planning commission review and approval. And unless there's an appeal of any of those matters before the commission, the final development plans all come back to the commission, and they're final with you. With that brief introduction, Alex will give you an overview of the administrative record, and we do compliment you all for your reading over the weekend. We know we gave you a lot, and we certainly appreciate your attention as you plowed through quite a bit of material.
Good afternoon. There's two other items I wanted to call to your attention. You have a memo from staff in regards to the design guidelines, a one-pager with the city logo on the corner. You also have a one-page front and back memo from the development team talking about the conditions or staff report areas where they have some concerns, and we'll probably go through those items one by one. In terms of the recommendation, there's a number of items we're asking you to make recommendations on today. The filing of the negative declaration, the approval of the general plan amendment and text amendment associated with that, approval of a preliminary planned development district, approval of the tentative parcel map, and the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way. In terms of the development team, we've received an application from Palm Springs Investments for an 18-hole golf course, 1,450 residential units, a 400 to 450-room hotel and/or vacation ownership units on about 460 acres. As Doug mentioned, there's a high degree of flexibility that's requested with this entitlement. Essentially, it's a land plan. The site is an irregular site. It's surrounded by Vista Chino on the north. The city limits to the east, as well as the Dream Homes to the southeast, the Gene Autry Trail, Highway 111 to the west, and Palm Springs International Airport also to the west, as well as some additional vacant land to the south. A portion of the site is in the Whitewater Wash, approximately 90 acres, and we'll address that, but you can see in the middle diagram before you, it's coated with a darker color. That's included in the project entitlements today and anticipated for future use as both the driving range and additional golf facilities, which may include at some date in the future an executive or nine-hole additional facilities. The site is pretty flat, Sonoran Desert scrub ecosystem, and it lies within the historic range or the Coachella Valley French-toad lizard habitat area, and is located within the mitigation fee area of that conservation plan. Payment of this fee will provide for acquisition and preservation of habitat suitable for a number of species. We'll talk about that in a little greater detail in a couple of moments. Previously, you may recall, there was an approval on the site in 1994, which envisioned a number of things, a more industrial-oriented project along with the golf course, 27 holes in the earlier proposal, a large tennis facility, as well as some additional, nearly a quarter of a million square feet of office and retail uses. At that time, a tentative map was also approved, and there were some amendments to the general plan, including elimination of Avenue 30. That project was approved with an environmental impact report, which was certified by the council at the time. The current project has been evaluated according to state law, and based upon the current project, it has been determined that the proposed project may incrementally contribute to, but will overall have a reduced environmental impact in comparison to the previous project, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared and circulated through the process. You received that a couple weeks ago to allow you to have some time to read it. In terms of this document, we circulated to the state and the responsible agencies. We did receive a letter back from the governor's office, the state office, and clearinghouse for environmental documents. The environmental review period ended June 4th, and we did not receive any comments. One phone call from our neighboring city to the east, but no written correspondence of any kind has been received since. In terms of the project description, in your staff report, there is the specific or general plan amendment to the land use designations from the industrial to a number of residential and high-density uses that are called out. There's also the policy amendment on page three and four of your report. Briefly, the proposed policy would encourage large mixed-use developments containing business parks, large-scale resorts, recreational amenities, and supporting a residential base. Clearly, we have some industrial uses directly to the west of the site, kind of interwoven with the site. And what we would anticipate with the general plan amendment and text amendment would be the ability to have some residential in proximity to the existing industrial, commercial uses. Total number of units is 1,450 that's called out in the general plan, and there's also the similarly called out, the number of hotel rooms and timeshare units. The project area is broken into a number of planning areas. Planning areas one and two on the top diagram, the smaller diagram, is the gold color, and you'll see that that approximates the intersection of Gene Autry Trail and Vista Chino Road. In planning area two, the applicant is requesting the ability to construct up to 970 units of various types of residential, as well as the hotel location, and some of the related resort types of commercial uses such as spa, restaurants, health clubs, recreation amenities, and related office and commercial uses, which would complement a hotel. We have included a provision, which the applicant would like to discuss later on in this meeting, whereby the applicant would have approximately eight years after commencement of the construction of the golf course to realize their objective of the hotel. We've used eight years, because it's an intermediate timeframe between a five- and 10-year period that the applicant has mentioned about the development window for the entire project. The applicant's going to ask you to make it a five-year period in which, after which time, they would have the ability to use the site for strictly residential and eliminate the hotel or vacation ownership units portion of the project. That's something that they're going to ask you to make a recommendation on this afternoon. In terms of this area, we have worked with the applicant to determine the appropriate amount of open space, and the applicant has agreed that 45% open space is an appropriate amount of open space in an area where you would likely have high-rise development, and still allow for some relationship in open spaces next to or interwoven with the golf facilities. The second part of this area that is important and needs to be called to your attention is the fact that indeed, the applicant is asking for the ability to use the planning area one and two for high-rise development. And we have set up a number of recommended setbacks based on the type of use surrounding the high-rise development. Under the current ordinance, the applicant would have the ability, if approved, to go to high-rise development with 65-foot maximum height. So that's something to consider in terms of the high-rise. The applicant will also have some detailed drawings that, if need be, can be reviewed to talk about the relationships when you have the two-to-ones and three-to-one setbacks to kind of give you something to review. They're talking about a request for a three-to-one setback to single-family parcels on and off-site from the high-rise, a two-and-a-half-feet-to-one-foot setback from exterior edges along Gene Autry and Vista Chino to the high-rise development, and then a one-to-one setback for property or parcel line other than those listed above, including golf and/or wash parcels. The applicant's letter to you asks for some clarification and some flexibility on the one-to-one, and they'll talk about that when they have the opportunity. In terms of golf course, planning area three and four, this is actually the golf course, and you see it on your project in the green areas. This is essentially golf course, maintenance area, building, and the clubhouse that they would like to utilize in these areas. In terms of planning areas five through nine, which are the yellow with orange and yellow areas, they're asking for some flexibility. Planning areas five through six would be, uses would be at the R2 zone level, so you'd have some opportunities for some multifamily, some higher-density housing. And planning areas seven through nine would have the uses of a single-family or an R1 zone, which would be limited to single-family uses. In terms of the property development standards, in areas seven through nine, the applicant is asking for the ability to have 2,500-square-foot lots, which is consistent with some of the earlier approvals in the area, including the Pintura, which is now under construction on Araby and East Palm Canyon Drive, as well as some of the other projects that have been recently under consideration. In terms of building heights in areas seven through nine, the applicant has requested the ability to have a building height from 28 to 32 feet in minimum and maximum two stories. The applicant's asking for the ability to go over that with architectural features, screened mechanical units, and chimneys, which do not exceed 10% of the roof area or exceed the height by an additional 10 feet. Staff's pretty concerned about that. We think a maximum 32 feet in height should be sufficient. In addition, the applicant's asking for building site coverage where there would be no maximum. However, with this level of development intensity on 2,500-square-foot lots, we could see the need to have some minimum amount of open space or a maximum site coverage, and we're recommending essentially a 50% site coverage maximum for this. In terms of circulation throughout the project, would like to talk to you a little bit about the streets and then get into a little greater detail. Off-site circulation is provided by Gene Autry and Vista Chino. Gene Autry improvements do require approval by Caltrans. They were noticed on the project, but we have been working with them and will continue to have them review the project. Additional off-site circulation is also provided by San Joaquin. And there's an issue related to that in the vacation, which we'll talk about in a minute, as well as Chia Drive and Tachiva Drive. Sunline provides transit service to the site. Custom bus shelters are being requested, and signalization of the main entries and possibly at Chia Road will be required if the hotel is constructed. In terms of pedestrian access, because we're concerned that the site is limited in providing pedestrian access to development to the west, we have recommended a condition of approval which would require off-site improvement of a sidewalk along Vista Chino to be constructed in early phase or first phase of the project. The applicant is concerned about that and would like you to consider the necessity of that off-site improvement. Again, in terms of phasing, the project is proposed to be built out in a five-to-10-year period, and that would be depending on market conditions. The golf course and a portion of the village would be part of the first phase, and they'd ask for some flexibility in later phases. In terms of the design of grading and golf course, the site would be, or it's in the intent of the applicant to do mass grading on the site to create the golf course amenities. The golf course construction would require the movement of about 1.2 million cubic yards of dirt. The golf course would be lowered about four to five feet, and the adjacent real estate would be raised about four to five feet, creating an average differential of about nine feet. This is an important design of the golf course and project site in that it would allow for the golf facility to be used as retention and water movement areas. In terms of Quimby Act and parks and recreation fees, we're asking that residential development contribute to park and recreation impacts through the payment of Quimby Act fees when adopted by the city. We're in the process of reviewing the state legislation. We should have an act online pretty quick. We have a couple of staff members looking at that now. So we'd like to put that in as a condition of the project. The applicant's going to ask you about that as well. There are existing and proposed overhead utilities in the area. We're asking that all the utilities, electrical, otherwise above or less than, sorry, 35 KV, be undergrounded as part of the design of the project. Back to the environmental review and circulation. The environmental assessment was circulated, and it's concluded again that the, from the environmental review, that the project would have a reduced impact in comparison to the earlier project proposed on the site. And if you're interested, we can discuss specific mitigation and impact areas. However, there's impacts and mitigation measures in land use and planning, geology, traffic, circulation, biological hazards, noise, public services, utility, service systems, and aesthetics. The impacts are in the mitigation monitoring program. Attached to the report is exhibit five, and that's available for your discussion. In conclusion, we would summarize by the project would comply with the adopted general plan provisions, should be a general plan amendment to be approved, and would meet city and project goals by providing high-quality mixed-use resort residential project in the city. We believe the economic impacts are beneficial to the city, and the project would promote a wide variety of housing types, which is, again, in accordance with the housing element and general plan of the city. I would like to approach the boards, kind of walk you briefly through the project, and then answer any questions you may have. In terms of orientation purposes, we have Gene Autry Trail, Vista Chino across the top, planning areas one, two, three, planning area four in the Wash with future golf and driving range facilities, planning area five here, six, seven, eight, and nine. Circulation is proposed to occur in a couple of areas here and here, with the ability to have additional resort entry here, as well as at Chia Drive, and some access in this area off San Joaquin. Golf course design is laid out here, you know, very sparse attention to future phases, but we do have an understanding that there has been some flexibility in design to allow for expanded golf uses, potentially short game facilities or expansion of holes in the Wash area. In terms of the residential product, this shows one draft of how the project could be laid out in terms of providing for residential uses throughout the site. Kind of a spine road here through the project, residential uses in these areas. In terms of existing uses in the area, we'd like to call your attention to an exhibit in the environmental assessment, which provides for the open space buffer around and adjacent to existing industrial uses and proposed industrial uses on the area. And lastly, we'll call your attention to exhibit of the proposed right-of-way vacation on San Joaquin Drive. Presently, we have 40-foot of right-of-way, which is- Presently, we have 40-foot of right-of-way, which is excessive in terms of our general plan standards. We would propose eliminating the 15 westernmost feet of this right-of-way in accordance with our general plan and in accordance with previous development approval to the south, the industrial map that you may recall from a number of years back. I believe it's parcel map 29632. This concludes staff's presentation. I think the director may have some additional points to add, and we'll answer any questions.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. A couple of conditions of approval before you open the public hearing, I'd just like to make some minor changes to. Condition number eight under planning, that's on page two of the conditions. We've indicated that there needs to be a disclosure statement regarding the location of the project relative to roadway, roadways, and airport noise. What we'd like to do is also add in adjoining M1P development and vacant properties zone M1P. So it's very clear, we know that there's a concern from an adjoining property owner that there be fair notice that somebody could buy a house next to vacant land, which could end up being an industrial land use, and we've built in buffers into the project as well as the property development standards to augment that. So just, we changed roadways to roadways and then add in adjoining M1P properties. The other condition I'd like to adjust is number 21 on page four of the recommended conditions of approval. Number 21 should read all residential development. The hotel, timeshares, they're not subject to that, that condition of approval. We suspect in all likelihood we will have a Quimby ordinance in place before they have any subdivisions approved on this property. So we're just doing that as an upfront condition of approval under the planned development district, that that's coming down the path at this point. Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of material here. I know the applicant has comments, and we'll certainly try to answer any questions that come up after the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Mr. Grinch?
Clarification on the southern boundary, is that that paved feeder street that goes into the Dream Homes? Where is it? What is the southern boundary?
The southern boundary is open desert. There's a triangle-shaped industrial map north of that road.
Okay.
That enters into the Dream Homes.
Okay, so it's a little north of there.
Yeah, there's a 42-acre site in between the south property line here and Mission, and that property has been approved for a industrial subdivision map.
Probably pretty close to opposite one of the last hangars then.
It goes up to just south of, well, a little bit north of Millionaire.
While we're talking about boundaries, I had a question. Is San Joaquin Drive totally located in the city of Palm Springs?
It's a 50/50 street.
It's a 50/50 street, so all development on the east side is in the city of Cathedral City?
That's correct. And then we would have the west side improved and maintained by this project, so they'll have a nice parkway and a barrier fence and wall system.
Any other questions of staff? This is a public hearing matter. Anybody wishing to address the commission, please come forward at this time. Please give us your name and sign the clipboard before you leave.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Blue. I'm one of the developers of the property, and I would just like to start by saying that a lot has happened since we got involved with this project about a year ago. We've, I think, resolved a lot of issues and found a few that we didn't know about when we got involved, but I think all in all, it's been a very busy and very productive year. When we started, we made a commitment to the city and to the staff that we would create a quality project and that we would see this thing through and make this project happen. And I think we've made a great effort to do that, and I think have hopefully been pretty successful so far. We've created a quality golf course designed by Origins Golf Design. We've created a land plan with Forma, an internationally-known land planning firm, and I think we've made possible the development of a hotel on the site by putting together enough land, a good enough development, that I think we've got a chance to attract a hotel. And we've put together the land that will enable us to expand the golf to meet the needs of a hotel should one come. So I think we have created a situation where we can have a nice golf community and the possibility of a good hotel on the site. We're right now on schedule to start construction before the end of the year, and that's a very important date to us because of some of the PM10 requirements that we would meet should we start later. In an effort to do that, we're actually somewhat ahead of ourselves in that we've actually started the working drawings for the golf course and are working on the grading plans as we speak. Maybe a little risky on our part, but in order to meet that timeframe and the commitment that we made, we felt that was important. With that, in order to continue to meet that timeframe and start the project this year, it's important that we would appreciate your prompt consideration of this matter and hopefully move us on so we can break ground before the end of the year. With that, I'd like to introduce Charlie Davidson, who's with Origins Golf. I think in our working session, you saw a little bit about the golf course, but I wanted him just to say a few words, and if you had any questions, please feel free to ask him.
Thank you, Pat, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. We're really excited to be here today. Our firm, Origins Golf Design, has had the opportunity to design golf courses all over the world. And when we come many times to resort properties or very solely dedicated golf properties, we have an opportunity that golf will drive the project. But the majority of times, when we come to a master-planned community, the residential portions of the projects seem to be what drive the golf, and it certainly does not allow us to provide the kind of quality golf experience that we would like to do everywhere. We realize, as do the developers of this project, that the Coachella Valley is steeped in golf. It's very competitive, and a lot is expected from every project that comes out of the ground. So unlike many other master-planned projects, the developers of this project very early on came to us and directed us to give them a golf course that would be of the highest quality, that would reflect an amenity to this community that would be as good as any in this valley, if not in Southern California. We feel very strongly that we can do that. So they have, in many cases, let golf drive this project, very unlike many other developments. For example, I'm not going to go through the whole golf course, but they have given us an ample amount of land that we can give the area, a championship golf course over 7,100 yards, par 72. They have allowed us to orient this golf course to take advantage of many of the natural resources, such as the majestic Santa Rosa Mountains, the many oftentimes snow-capped San Gorgonio, San Jacinto Mountains. And it's going to be accented by a natural desert repairing corridor running the full length of the project from north to south. They have not squeezed us. As you see, we've been able to do double fairways and, in many cases, triple fairways. This will definitely be a golf course project that the city of Palm Springs will be very proud of. So we would just like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to bring this project to the city of Palm Springs. It will definitely be a landmark project for you. As I've mentioned, we've done projects all over the world, and we're as excited about this project right now as any of the other projects that we're currently working on. So as time goes on, if you have any questions, we'd be very happy to answer those. In the meantime, I'd like to introduce Van Stevens, who is the president of Forma. Forma is an international planning firm who has done an outstanding job in making this one of the great projects of the Coachella Valley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good to see you again. We've had the chance to work with you in workshops in the past, and I won't repeat any of the design elements that we discussed with you. Basically, we want to summarize that the plan is a sophisticated one. It has a lot of pieces. It is a mixed-use project. It's really designed around the golf, but we have very trendy types ideas built into this to match what's going to happen in the development industry in the next 10 years. We've got these intimate neighborhoods that we think people are looking forward to, and we have a very pedestrian-friendly plan that we propose and refine with staff over time. The amenities of the project are extensive, the most notable probably for your concern and question, and I hope your enjoyment in the future, are that we're going to have, of course, the golf course as Charlie described, but we're going to have a number of other recreation elements in the project that will relate to the homeowners and the visitors that ultimately will be here. We have an extensive landscape program in the project represented in the design guidelines. We have a perimeter landscape program and buffering and screening and a, I think, a beautiful scene for the very important roads of Ginatri Trail and Vistacino. We have regional trails in those same peripheral areas that will be serving the community. We have a program we're proposing which includes gated entrances to the project for a lot of different reasons, of course, to protect many of the amenities that we're talking about with the big investment in golf and clubhouse and so forth, but also some of the lifestyle elements that will be happening within the villages of the project. The gates are peripheral. We will not have any internal gates. People, pedestrians especially, will have full access throughout the whole project. The visitors to the various land uses will also have access through those gates, and it's primarily focused on the people who live here and the visitors that are supporting the uses in the resort village. We have a very calming landscape concept relative to dealing with making streets amenities that fits along with the traditional neighborhood design principles that we shared with you in previous workshops, and we do expect to have a number of traffic calming devices proposed in the plan and working with the various future designers. The key land use components beyond the golf are two villages. There's a resort village in the north, which is meant to be a multi-level type of architecture, mixed-use, where we're sharing infrastructure such as parking and amenities. We're proposing that in the form of a village in the sense that it'll have a critical mass to support a lot of recreation, that we can have a number of people there that will bring us that, those amenities that we need in the whole community. And secondly, we need a complex of home styles that'll give us the price range differentials that will make this a healthy community in the future as we develop it with various builders. The complex in the north, the resort village, is the primary focus of many of the conditions that the staff has talked about. We have asked for flexibility in your development standards because this is an unusual project. It is a golf project, and we think the resort village will be intimately tied to that golf, and we would ask for flexibility. I think Marvin Roos will be talking about some of those standards. The golf village, as we call it, which is the lower portion of the project, southern portion, is meant to be a single-family type neighborhood. Again, they're intimate neighborhoods surrounded by golf. We suggested some lot sizes that are a little bit smaller than you've had traditionally in the city. Again, that's driven by the golf and some of the trends that are going on in the industry relative to what people want and the trade-offs relative to open space and rear yards and those types of questions. The plan overall is flexible. We've obviously not presented architecture to you, but with the design guidelines and the details that we've built into the standards, we think you have enough information to understand that it will be a quality project. With that, I'll turn it over to Marvin, and I think he will bring forward the exact changes and proposals that we have in the plan.
Chairman and commission, Marvin Roos with Monero Smith &amp; Associates. I believe Alex passed out this two-page memo, so I won't do that unless somebody needs a copy of that. Considering the breadth and depth of this project and the reports and the environmental work, I got to really commend staff, Mike Peroni, augmenting staff, Alex and Doug, for, you know, hammering on us, but also working with us to work through down to, you know, really what are basically a dozen issues, and a couple of them are relatively minor that we've asked for changes. I've also been asked to, you know, point out a couple of features of the project, one of which is that we are, in fact, have an agreement with Desert Water Agency to extend the tertiary water line, which is now located at Mesquite on basically the alignment of San Luis Rey, so we'll be bringing that line all the way up into the project. We're looking at that today, and the possibility exists that with that extension, both Cimarron and Desert Princess could also eventually be watered under tertiary water. So we're not quite sure it's going to get all the way up to Palm Springs Country Club, but that possibility also exists. That's about a three-mile, $2 million, I believe the number was, improvement that's on our back. Couple of changes just to go through that. We've got a couple in the staff report area, page 11, number four. We had proposed a no maximum building coverage standard relying on building setbacks, courtyards and design and the like. Staff is recommending 50%. We would recommend that we leave that without a figure, a specific figure, because we think this is an urban design thing. I'd point out that we have approximately half of the site is going to be in some kind of an open space requirement overall, so we have a lot of open space, and it's, we're trying to keep away from hemming ourselves in a lot of ways, but that's one area. On the onsite circulation, this was really a clarification that the entire spine road, while it's being designed with Phase One as it has to be, we're only going to be installing the pieces that need to be installed with Phase One. Again, that's not a condition request, it was just a clarification. And lastly, on the staff report, and this was on the handout that you just got today, as did we, out of all those changes, the only area that we're seeking some relief on is the recommendation that we eliminate the tall landscape berm on Ginatri Trail. We'd like to leave that in. We've had some experience with other projects where the golf was left open as a view corridor, and the golf does not stop the noise. We have noise both from the airport ground operations of some, and then, of course, Ginatri Trail. Ginatri Trail is actually producing more noise impact to this property than the airport is. We have agreed to sign the non-suit covenant. I have a gage easement as required normally in these circumstances around the airport, but we would like to leave in the ability to do the landscape berm and mound along Ginatri Trail to buffer primarily the homes in that case. The conditions of approval, planning number 14, this was mentioned, that would require the construction of an off-site sidewalk on Vistacino. I believe that's approximately a half a mile of sidewalk, and it says in Phase One. We'd like to delete that. We'd like to work with the city, perhaps with their missing links program. If it has to remain as a requirement, we'd like to place that so that it wouldn't occur until we really started having development up in that corner of the property. Our first phase of development is anticipated to be kind of one of the southerly residential quadrants, and it's really not going to, you know, we're not going to have people up at that north end for probably a couple of years at least, maybe more. Planning number 16 is a condition mandating construction of equestrian bike paths in the Whitewater Wash. We'd like to delete that condition. It's reliant on getting approvals from Riverside County Flood Control, possibly CVWD. They have not shown to be overly eager to have the public on their facilities, and the general plan for Cathedral City does not have those facilities, and I believe we've eliminated it southerly of, in the southerly part of the wash, south of Ramone Road. Again, if it's a condition, we hope it's, that we could be worded that the applicant worked with CVWD and RCFC to find some alignments. We think that, for most part, the bicycle path will be handled along Ginatri Trail, be a great trail. be a great trail, and be easier to facilitate under the circumstances of working with the 500-pound gorillas. Planning 21 is requesting parkland dedication and fees. I don't believe that there's an ordinance in place on that yet. We'd like to delete that requirement as well. We really don't know what that would mean. If there was a, if we had it in front of us, we could be able to really look at it closely again. About 50% of our site is recreation. We feel that our community is certainly going to be well-represented and well-served, and again, without the ordinance in front of us, we're concerned that, we're not sure what that impact would be. Planning 22, Doug mentioned, or Alex mentioned, about the period of time. Right now, it's saying you can't, you could not develop the hotel site for eight years. We would like to limit that to five years to seek the hotel user, and if in fact, we were lucky enough to have this entire project developed prior to that, although it's probably unlikely, be able to come back with other uses in that time period. And perhaps as a clarification to staff as we get to pass the public hearing, want to make sure that we can in fact propose uses within planning areas one and two prior to that, so we don't have to leave it vacant, but again, have a seven to 10 acre site identified that we could in fact work around and integrate into the plan. Planning number 27, which was a setback for high-rise. On item number three, which was the setbacks from golf and the wash and other things, we would like to add language to that that would establish the one-to-one setback as an average setback with a minimum of 20 feet, something like that, so that we can get some modulation in the setbacks and not just have a line. And again, that's internal, it's open spaces only, trying to get a little more flexibility there. Number 40 is kind of an odd little condition. In fact, some of them were seemingly just boilerplate, but prohibits downspouts on buildings. We would just like wording added that would allow us to do something if in fact it made architectural sense. There's a great little building on, it's either Montalva or Val de Vie, I can never remember which one it was. It's fabulous, I think it was an Italian designer did it, and the downspouts are, like, they're great, they're right there, they're bright red, they're right in your face, but they're part of the design, so it can be done. Number 48, which was, would prohibit outside paging or signalization, we need to do something to have page for golf. And again, that is, you know, it's an internal issue. Obviously, we could, I guess, impact our own residents, certainly not going to impact any other residences. And there are paging criteria that we could work with staff, come back and final development plans to go through that with you for details. Planning 51 required the applicant to provide all tenants with conditions of approval. We're not, I've never seen that one before, but we suspect that's probably non-residential tenants or users, and we think that's probably best as some kind of a CC in our issue as opposed to, here's the, here's the, here's the conditions of approval. And lastly, on the conditions, engineering number 87 was turning to get very specific on design criteria of the access at what's called Classic Drive right now opposite Sky West, and we are continuing to negotiate with the airport and Sky West on that design. In fact, we may be able to leave the existing left-turn access to the southerly Sky West open and not be in conflict with what we're proposing. And then just lastly, I'd point out that there've been a couple of tweaks to the overall site plan. The hotel has actually moved pretty much right at the north end of the golf now, kind of flipping where that, I think it was called a candidate clubhouse site. So the hotel, we're trying to get the hotel so it's really in a position to take advantage of the views to golf, et cetera. And the other, I think that one's still showing an asterisk down at the far southeast corner for the golf maintenance. We've done a study that would move that northerly to the north end of that finger of green along San Joaquin. It would still access off of San Joaquin, but it would not be right at the far southeast corner. Our golf course architect has worked through that. Again, there's been a tremendous amount of work on the part of staff, found a couple of typos which we're not going to go over. I'm sure Mike was bleary-eyed when he was doing some of this, and he did a great job, and do commend the staff for that. And again, the team is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Anybody else that wishes to speak to this matter, please come forward?
My name's Donald Broadhurst, I live on Verona Road, which is in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Vista Chino and Gin Autry, and I'm also an active volunteer at the Palm Springs Air Museum, which is directly across the street on Gin Autry from this proposed project. I don't have any problem with a golf course being in the area, as I play golf myself. I haven't heard what kind of a golf course it's intended to be. Is it private, semi-private, or public? Would it be a golf course that would be economically feasible for Palm Springs residents, year-round residents to play at? The one thing that disturbs me most of all, I haven't heard any discussion of all of the impact that a project like this will make on traffic in the area. The Vista Chino Gin Autry intersection is a reasonably busy intersection at present. The area that I live in, which is west of Gin Autry and north of Vista Chino, is now a shortcut from that intersection over to the intersection of Farrell and Racquet Club over there. The two main streets that get the most of the abuse are Via Esquela, which is the only left-hand turn off of Gin Autry north of Vista Chino, and they will go down there and go across Via Esquela, or turn right on Whitewater Club and come up to the end and go down my street and take that over to Farrell or Racquet Club. In addition to that, anybody that's tried to drive to the 10 freeway at approximately 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon, or go to Desert Hot Springs or anyplace up Gin Autry, and has sat in that traffic backup at the intersection of Gin Autry and the 10 freeway, would never want to do anything to make the traffic any worse than it is. I, you know, I just can't see what adding close to 2,000 residential units in an area that doesn't have proper egress now is going to do. In addition to that, the, it looks like they have entrance and egress on Gin Autry south of where the desert museum, the air museum would be, and also on Vista Chino, and it looks like that's the part of Vista Chino that floods every time we get a heavy rain. And you have to remember that not only Vista Chino floods in a heavy rain, but Gin Autry floods in a heavy rain, in which case, that if this is the case, and we even have floodgates on those roads to protect people from driving down them and killing themselves when they drive into the flooded roads. The only way out of that area would be west on Vista Chino or south on Gin Autry. So that's my concern. I haven't heard anybody say anything about what kind of a golf course it's going to be, A, or B, what about the impact on traffic in the area? And I'm sure I'm not going to get the answer now, but I certainly think that's something that needs to be considered. I have too many people driving through my street now using it as a shortcut between that intersection and Racquet Club, too many people doing it this time, and adding that kind of traffic to it, I can only see it getting worse. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jim Stewart. I, Group One Realty, I represent the two largest vacant parcels of the four vacant parcels that are within the realm of this project. Ours total are almost nine acres. The original plan that was approved brought the golf course down in between the industrial properties, and then there wasn't any concern about setbacks because there was golf there. Now, according to this far plan, the, there's houses right up against Gin Autry and up against the industrial parcels. We are currently discussing the corner of Gin Autry and Tachiva with a, well, we can't talk about it too much, but it's a 24-hour operation that the city probably would greatly want. I mean, we're working on to put it on either corner there, but they're looking at that corner. It will be built out as industrial because it will be an industrial project running 24 hours a day. Doug and I, we discussed the setbacks, I think for the record, because I think the project's fine, I think the city needs this. I was disappointed to see that the golf course was pulled out between the industrial properties, which created a situation, but I think we need to know that the industrial people, property owners, that there will be no, shall we say, no detriment to the setbacks on those properties, that they can still develop them to the actual zoning. And Doug has basically gone over that with me, but I think it should be put into the record about the setbacks, about the, I appreciate the covenant that will have to be put in about people buying, that the vacant land is industrial and what can be done there. There's real estate laws that protect both the developer and the city and everybody else that can be put in, but that's the main issue, and we do have discussions right now on that one main corner, and it is built, it will be built out to the max, maximum height, maximum usage, and 24 hours a day. And when it's announced, everybody here will be very happy of what it will be, and it will not hurt them, it'll actually help them too. So if we could just get those in the record, and I think Doug, to explain the red line a little bit more, and what is there so that it's in the record, so that we know that the 20, I think he said 20-foot setback is in the record and made a part of any approvals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Dave Darren, I'm a partner in the law firm with John Schoenberger. As Mr. Schoenberger mentioned, we have a client who has an interest in this property and has been with this property for quite some time. We're very excited that finally a developer has come along that appears to have the wherewithal to put this all together, to make this land productive, and to build something on there. I'm also speaking as an individual, I'm a parent to children, my wife and I live in Palm Springs, have for 11 years now, and we work in Palm Springs. I'm age 40. This is just about the first project that I could think of in a long time where somebody in my situation would be able to buy a home on a golf course, and by that I'm referring to a single-family residence as opposed to a townhouse or a condominium. As we all know, there's a lot of development in La Quinta, but I prefer to live in Palm Springs. I'm on the Palm Springs Parks and Recreation Commission, so personally, in addition to professionally, I'm very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darren. Does anybody else would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I think this is an appropriate time to take a 10-minute recess, and when we return, I will ask staff to comment on the list of requests of the applicant concerning modifications. requests of the applicant concerning modifications. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'll try to do this as quickly as we can. Like to start just with an explanation, so it's clear in the record. The two exhibits that are on the left before you, they're conceptual. You're not approving those today. The actual project plan that you're approving is the upper right, and then the narrative descriptions and the exhibits that are in that particular part of it. The final development plans will come through, and that's where you'll take a look at actual golf design and the like. So just for the record, when we start stamping things, we'll only do those. I'm going to start on page two of the recommendations. And what I'd like to do is, I've already made a suggestion in our staff report that we add adjoining M1 properties and make roadways plural to that condition, and I think that is the type of concern that Mr. Stewart had on the issue he brought up regarding future project. Item number 14, or excuse me, in the staff report, now referring back to the applicant's handout, page 11, number four in the staff report, what I would suggest that maybe we put in there that it'd be fixed 50% maximum building coverage unless approved differently in the final development plans. And here's why. On a 2,500-square-foot lot, the setbacks that Mr. Roos referred to are probably adequate and would give you enough buffer around the perimeter because it's that type of product. You start getting into a little bit larger residential lot, you know, and just throw out 5,000 or 6,000 or 7,000, and start visualizing structures that are 100% coverage, or somebody comes in and tries to go setback to setback, unless you have a development plan, which you're going to see each and every final development plan. We just like to have them think in terms of 50% open space, and if they get less than that, they come in at the time they're starting to design their residential product. And if they have a product that makes sense with more than 50% building coverage, you know, we're not going to be adverse to it. On some of those 2,500-square-foot lots, they might. If they go single-story, you know, they're going to want to push the envelope. If they go two-story, they're probably going to have a little bit more open space on the lot. So I think if we put the language in unless approved by the commission, yeah, condition number 18, we would add in the, you know, and explain, you know, unless approved differently in the final development plan. I think that gives everybody some flexibility. Going back to their, their reference on page 14, we'll just make that correction in the staff report as to how much of the roadway system would go in with Phase 1. On the item, on the berm on Gene Autry Trail, one of the things that we think is going to be important to the project and the community is to have windows into the golf course, so that on Gene Autry Trail, you don't drive by and see a berm and a wall. And, you know, so we think that there should be some windows, and that's going to be a final development plan issue, but if you leave it in the design guidelines that, you know, they just bury it, you know, behind a berm and wall, you won't see the golf course. And I can tell you that I'll have to explain this to the council, because when we showed the council this in workshop, there was a concern that there's not enough golf adjacent to Gene Autry Trail, you know, from the standpoint of visibility. So we'd suggest that we keep that. And we think you can probably deal with some of the noise just by orientation of berms and creating visual windows in and through. And I think that that also works with the layout for a golf course and how you would do trees in some areas. Number 14, which is the condition of approval, sidewalk on Vista Chino, we'd recommend that that be required on first phase of residential development. I guarantee you, somebody's going to move in there, and they're going to try to walk west on Vista Chino, and they're going to call the city council and say, how come there's no sidewalk when you go along Vista Chino? Along there, we respect their concern about doing it with the multifamily residential, but there really are no sidewalks on either side of the street in that linkage, and at least if you do it on the south side, as described in the staff recommendation, it gets you down to almost Whitewater Club Drive, and you could cross the street, pick up the sidewalk, and then go all the way down to the shopping centers to the west. It's a long walk, but I guarantee you, somebody's going to do it. We're going to be explaining why it's not there. The other one, they said maybe we could get a grant. Last week, the city council eliminated our grants administrator position. Marcus does a lot of things for the city, does a great job, but I'm not sure he's going to be chasing grants for small missing link sidewalk type things. We'll be going after big grants, not little ones, if we have any energy in the organization for chasing grant money. So Bob Moeller's position is eliminated. I'm not sure we're going to get missing links in the future. That title alone got us the grant, because the grant committee said, what's a missing link? And Bob was ahead of everybody from then on. Planning number 16, the Equestrian Trail Bike Way along Whitewater Wash. I can assure you, if you don't have a long-term vision for bikeways and equestrian facilities along washes, the flood control districts will discourage you every time you meet with them. Riverside County Flood Control has been really good with the city in doing bikeways adjacent to washes. They're very successful, and they're highly used. CVWD is tough. They don't like them at all. But I assure you, if you blink at the first request, you'll never have them, recognizing that we might have trouble getting through Cathedral City. You know, we would encourage the commission to look long-term and visionary. It may take us a long time to get the things worked out, but if you give it up today, you'll never have it. You can't come back and ask for it. If the commission would like, we could maybe put something in that they reserve an easement area through the golf course or other parts of the project, and that it'd only be required to be installed when we have a linkage on the other end. But our general plan, you know, calls for equestrian trails and bikeways all along the Whitewater Wash, and if we didn't push real hard, we wouldn't have any along Tuckwitz Wash either. I think Mesquite Country Club was a bit unhappy with the staff, and we said, we're going to put it in your golf course. And you know what? We've never had a problem with it. And... Touched on the 50% building coverage in 18, as far as an addition there. 21, I've already addressed, staff would recommend that you keep it in. We think it's fair to put it in the record today, because we think by the time they build homes, it'll be on the record. And we're going to do a fee that's similar to what other cities have done in the Coachella Valley. The Building Industry Association is going to watch us. There's nobody else in the valley, really, that doesn't have a fee of the primary cities. We're the last one coming on board with that. Number 22, having to do with when and how long they hold the golf course. We're in agreement that we reserve at least an eight-acre site. You may want to say an eight to 10-acre site, so there's some flexibility depending on how they reserve that site if they start designing the multifamily residential area. Staff thought that eight years, as I recall, gives you a year and a half to two years of golf course construction and getting it up, you know, and then a period of time. If the commission would like to adjust that, maybe I'd suggest you do it five years from when the golf course is open. I'll just tell you that in the council study session, the prime discussion was hotel, hotel, hotel. So that's why staff kind of pushed it on a more restrictive fashion. It gets quicker. 27, we agree with. 40, we agree with. 48, we agree with. 51, we would agree with that the conditions of approval go to res, or commercial tenants or users, and then that the CCNRs address the residential. And if they come up with a way that everybody gets the information, we don't care how it's disclosed, but, you know, we're okay with the way they've done with a very minor adjustment. 87, I think, has some flexibility built in as far as the final design of it. The condition does get fairly specific, and I personally hope that the left-turn driveway into Sky West can be maintained. I personally think that all of the turning pockets recommended by the traffic engineer, or excuse me, the traffic engineer that did the traffic study are probably too much. You know, 450 feet of left-turn storage, 300, I mean, there's a lot of storage out there. This is a residential project that's going to have a lot of seasonal residents. As I read this report, I went out and sat at Lowe's parking lot... As I read this report, I went out and sat at Lowe's parking lot and looked at the huge left turn channel that you have westbound on that one that the traffic report recommended. And you know what? Nobody uses that left turn. I was the only one person that I saw go in that way. You know, so sometimes you make assumptions, they become fact, and they're not always the way people use properties. So I would hope that as we do street improvement plans and pockets, that we have some adjustment on those, those channels. Otherwise, some of the beautiful median that we're going to install pretty darn quick is going to turn into snakes with, with concrete and cobbles and you'll be a little bit disappointed. But I think that some of them, and I'm not a traffic engineer, I've got to rely upon their final decision, but I, I think we need to look at all of those and hopefully have some flexibility as we look at it. But eighty-seven has some, some language in there. If the commission would like to make it more specific, that they work with the other entities, we could certainly add that. Right now, it's pretty much up to the city engineer based upon the traffic study. Mr. Chairman, I think that covers all of them. Unless you have any questions, that completes our comments on the project.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Some of the other commissioners may have questions. And let's go back to the commissioners. Ms. Marantz?
I have several items, but one in particular right now that I'd like to discuss that, um, there's so many issues out here now about water. And I would just hope that somewhere in the, when we get a little further along in this project, that the developers consider our problems with water and go with drought tolerant landscaping at all possible. And there's many ways to do it, even with the golf course, not just around the homes and the perimeter, but the golf course as well. I think it's going to be a big issue and I would assume that they have met with Desert Water Agency. So hopefully this is something that they will definitely consider.
I know they have been meeting with DWA. They're, they're not only looking at using reclaimed water for the golf and, you know, hopefully as much of the, the parkway areas that they can where there's not conflict with human activity. You know, as we look at the final landscape plans, I think they're going to hear more and more about drought tolerant, just on the premise that they don't want to have to come in and redesign this golf course five or 10 years out because, you know, things have gotten more restrictive or the cost of water has gotten up to the point. I think we're in a wonderful position as a community and that we've, we've got a wastewater treatment plant. We've got a tertiary facility. It has water to sell and it has the ability to double its size. So we should have 10 million gallons of water, you know, and that, that should handle eight to 10 golf courses or, you know, a few less golf courses and a little more park facilities. So I think we're going to probably be the most water efficient city in the Coachella Valley on golf because we're going to be building some new golf courses that have it right off the bat.
Because certainly I feel that even though it's probably a lot easier to control wind when you have, you know, you don't have sand blowing and natural flora and fauna of the desert, you, you know, grass certainly makes it a lot easier to control, but I'm sure there's other mitigations that can be used to.
Well, the good news is, in that regard, you get to approve the final landscape development plan. So you'll, you'll take a look at those as a commission and, you know, we'll, we'll certainly look out for that and encourage them to be very efficient.
But certainly all in all the project, I'm very supportive and I'm glad to see that it's going forward again.
Ladies first, I guess. The one thing I didn't hear addressed was the height. Did I miss that? Because I don't think that, that any more than thirty-two feet is necessary, especially if you're not going to have equipment on the roofs. And did you talk about that, Doug?
Are you talking about residential? You're talking about the, including the hotel?
No. In the, in the, I believe it was a request by the applicant to be able to go higher than thirty-two feet. Did I misunderstand that?
Their, their proposal was to be able to go higher than thirty-two feet as far as the residential, but I don't think they had any objections to the recommendation in the staff report. I think they're okay.
I had a question. We didn't have, even though it's discussed in the report, it's not totally clear and I don't know whether the applicant needs to address it or whether staff can respond. Can we talk about the circulation and this, this main road or spine road that they're, that they're discussing? Is this going to go in in the first phase? And also tie this into the comments that this is going to be pedestrian friendly. As, as that relates to the gating, are we going to have gating at the, at the spine road? It also implies that there may be internal gating for several of the residential developments separately from the overall gating and also comment on, in addition to pedestrians, if this is going to be bicycle friendly. I really would like to see that bicycle path along the wash as a part of this, but is there going to be any other bicycle path or arrangements made throughout the project? Did the staff respond to that or should we invite the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, so we, we don't have to then have the applicant correct us in any inaccuracies. Maybe the applicant can address that and then if staff wants to correct the applicant, we'll look a lot better.
That's fine with us. Perhaps the applicant can decide which one of their, their entourage would like to address
Mr. Chairman, Van Stevens. I'm, I'm on the design committee for the, for the project, so I think I can help you out with this. Pedestrian friendly is, is a complicated thing and it really focuses on making the pedestrians comfortable, not so much the automobile. And, and one of the reasons we want to have the gates is to start that calming right in the beginning. And that's what we call in the design world is calming the traffic. If you look through the plan, unfortunately I don't have a pointer, but there's a whole variety of shapes and forms there, roundabouts, special angled turning movements and so forth that really slow those cars down. And that, that's the important thing to pedestrian friendly. We will have special walkways going various directions that will be in demand for the residents of this project to get to, for example, the country club. We've got a special pathway that goes through the middle of the project that people will be able to use to get to that country club with golf carts, with bicycles, with wheelchairs, whatever works well, other than the vehicle. We can get all around this project in any direction we want to for the various recreation features that we have planned in the project. Technology. Thank you.
What about access to the project from the public? Will, will pedestrians be able to walk on this project without going through a, a security gate? Will bicyclists be able to get on the project and, and travel the streets? I'm thinking in terms of something like we have at Mesquite Country Club right in the center of Palm Springs, which also comes, takes you up to the wash. We, we have kind of a, an open area here, even though residential areas are gated in that particular project. How, how does this project compare?
Well, we've proposed the, the two gates here off Gene Autry Trail and Vista Chino, and those will be, you know, full, fully manned gated security control points for the project. There's a big investment here and we felt that would be appropriate to the residents here who will be buying homes and they'll be very nice homes, as you can imagine. And additionally, the golf course is something we have to protect, you know, how those, how they can be.
In other words, to keep, keep both pedestrians and bicyclists out in addition to automobiles?
That's correct. The people who have access to this project will either be owners, renters, or visitors of the various land uses that we have. Now, that's just residential, but we also have recreation features like the golf course and other types of things where they'll be public permitted in various formulas as access. The candidate hotel site is in the same league that if we have people coming to the hotel, obviously, they're going to have full access to all the recreation and amenities and the pathways that, that I've described. But they specifically will have to have those relationships to those land uses to acquire. We will not have general public access through this site for anybody just happening to pass through. So it will be a control point for security for the uses that we're suggesting here.
What about if there's a, a bikeway and equestrian trail along the wash?
We've talked about that. It's, it's problematic to do for a lot of reasons. It's one of the reasons we asked for that condition to be removed. But the wash and the levee, here's the levee here. If that becomes a regional trail and it makes sense, it's always something we can deal with because it's external primarily from our project. The pathway to the driving range and other golf expansion things here will, again, will be problematic for us to deal with, but we can still do it. If that needs to be a regional trail and it can be worked out with all the agencies, which is the big issue, I don't think we're the issue, it's the agencies, then we can accommodate that. And we have proposed regional trails here and all the way around the project wherever we can provide for that. So those regional trails, I think, will provide plenty of access for the general public to pass through and around the area. And again, if you're there to play golf, you're going to be able to get in the gates. If you're there as a hotel guest or if you're a guest of one of the owners or if you're a renter or if you're there for a special event because the, some of the recreation features in the project will have banquets and those types of things. So it's a type of gate that you can obviously get into if you have a good reason, but to be a casual pedestrian or vehicular access through here will be difficult. And that, that's why we're proposing is because we have those security concerns.
What, in the, in the report, it implied that some of the residential areas may have their own gates. Is that really what you're contemplating?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where that came from, but honestly, we have only ever proposed peripheral two gates here and perhaps maybe additional card actuated safety gates that will be accessory. We have, we really have no proposal for any internal gates in the plan at this point. There's no need for it. The size of the project isn't necessary. And the intimate neighborhoods that we've designed to this thing, I don't think require that as long as we have the primary gates. I think at one time in the history of the design of the project, and we have worked hard with staff on this, we did talk about not having primary gates but having secondary gates. Again, that doesn't really work as well as what we're suggesting here and, and what, what people really want. And I think we're really concerned about protecting this golf course. It's going to be a very nice facility and, and it cannot take any, any sort of, of traffic in, that's not appropriate and focused on what players are all about.
Thank you. That answers that question. I'd just like to comment, I, I think that the, of all the issues that are kind of, as staff went along and the, the proposals that Doug made in responses, I think are pretty good. But I, I would like to see that equestrian and bicycle paths stay in there if it can be accomplished without conditioning it on linking up to any other. I think that it goes out to Vista Chino and that's link enough and it goes through the length of the wash and that's, that's link enough. We've had that in, in the other portions of the wash where, where the city golf course is and behind Demuth Park. And the fact that it existed allowed other people to link to it later. It, it became the fundamental part. That's my only comment.
I feel the same way. I, I think, you know, this is a high-end resort. It's, it's not likely to cater to the golfer who wants to have the discount golf fee. But I think it, it, you know, it's more along the lines of a PGA West or a reserve type development, or at least is the target they're happening, they're, they're after. And, and I suspect with the cost of the land, that's what they've got to go after. But there is a way in around those very nice developments to incorporate regional trails and bike trails and things like that. I'm probably the only one here who rode their bike today and I came across Mesquite Country Club on my way here. And there aren't many people who do it, but what you'll find is that the residents will take advantage of it, the occasional equestrian thing, and you can probably secure it from the rest of the development as, as well. And so I, I, I too would like them to take a look at that. And when they bring back the final plan, recognizing security, recognizing that this is a high-end development and you don't want your casual visitor, you know, taking the shortcut through here. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion if everybody else.
Why don't you go ahead and go to shot.
All right. You have, I'm sorry.
Let's watch.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just, I echo what Marcus said.
You'd whispered most of your comments. No, no, just kidding. Let's see. Mr. Chairman, I would approve the case number five point zero six six, the PDD two thirty-one and then TPM three zero nine two eight. Subject to the conditions, the staff report and the design guidelines with the following changes. And everybody keep track because you have a lot of notes. Condition number eight regarding the disclosure statements, the adjoining parcels of land, I think they were M1P roadways, you're going to clean up that language. The construction of the off-site sidewalk is, is really going to be a significant burden. And I, I'm not, I mean, I, I, I think ultimately it will be important to have, I'm not wedded to the first phase of development. I'm, I'm willing to give them a little more flexibility there. So let me see, how can I? Someone got a word?
Well, there, we, staff suggested first residential phase.
Very good. Come on with the first residential phase. And they can come back and work us over on that later. Sixteen, the dedicated easement and working with CVWD or Riverside County Flood Control one way, some, work that language on. And that can be even sort of off premises or in the wash and, and in their handling of the gates. And they could also pick up that street that's shared by Cathedral City on the south, east side from Vista Chino. But I, I think you can make a pretty nice circle around here that's going to be valuable for both the residents and the rest of us who occasionally ride bikes. I have looked everywhere for the berm wall language you're looking for and I can't find it in here. So that was in the next note I had on this page because you keep bringing it up. It was in a second document where that there would be some view corridors. And, and again, I think that can be worked out in design. I'm not one who thinks it's in this staff. I, I think the berm, and I, and I don't necessarily see that they're proposing a, a wall and a berm, but that view sheds into the golf course can be worked out in the, in the final design or the next design that we're going to see. Twenty-two, I'm comfortable with the five years.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Oh yeah, the part, I was going to leave that.
We'll keep that in.
Left that in. Y'all know about it, it's done everywhere else. Stay around when they write the ordinance. I'm sure you'll be here, Marvin. The, the five-year, I'm comfortable with that upon completion of the golf course as the trigger. Opening is completion. First tee time. The, yeah. The item twenty-seven, the average setback language was, I'm comfortable with that. Deleting item forty from, comfortable with that. They can just deal with that in their design when they come here. We can strike the outside paging under forty-eight, under fifty-one.
When you say strike it, you mean as it relates to the golf, golf course?
Correct. But, but, you know, frankly, you're the other side of the airport in a residential area that they're designing. I don't care what they do relative to paging. My guess is they're going to be more sensitive to it than we are. I mean, any, anyone else who's going to be affected, you're going to have to get through Gene Autry Trail in the airport to disturb. Let's see, fifty-one, included there, it would be commercial tenants that would be notified and then whatever language you want to mention it in the CCNRs. And then, I have eighty-seven circled, but I can't remember why. That was the, you were discussing left turn lanes and what do you want to do there?
I think you may want to add in some language that the design of this intersection be coordinated with the airport, existing airport users. And I think that's what the applicant has, has indicated.
Right. Okay. Like you say, it's all going to be worked out in the engineer's office anyways. And that was all I, did someone else miss anything?
We had that list of supplemental design modifications. We had that list of supplemental, uh, design modifications, item one through nine.
I think those were in there, but tell me what I missed. Did you?
There's just a whole list that they gave us that were not part of the original conditions that we've got today.
And I think the only one the applicant seemed to have a concern about was the, uh...
The berm.
The berm.
Yeah, and I thi- and I agree with them on that. The, um, um, let, let them design it and bring it back and, and I...
I think that the staff comment was that city council wanted open views.
Right. And, uh, and I'm, I'm trying to leave the applicant as much leeway as possible to bring back to the city council, though.
Would the applicant like to comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The design committee from the project standpoint would, would like to comment because this is a real important matter as a matter of fact. It was very clear in the beginning that you, the whole city, wanted to see and, and feel that golf course along Genoautry Trail. We understand that. And the design, I think, has delivered that, probably not the entire length, but a good portion of the site is, golf is on Genoautry Trail. And, and we have specific wording saying that there is a view corridor there and we will make sure that everybody driving along that road will know there's a golf course there. The problem with saying no berms is it's a technical issue. Golf courses basically are a bowl effect to contain the golf balls, et cetera. Uh, and we will have mounding, as we call it. Some people call it berms and it will have to happen along that edge for the nature of golf. Secondly, we have an errant ball issue, uh, along Genoautry Trail. I'm sure you don't want forty-foot-high metal screens along that road. And Caltrans will get touchy about this if we don't do some special things along that area, so...
Do you want forty-foot-high berms?
No, no. We've done a lot of golf courses in this, and especially with, with origins and, and how they've been able to really make these things work. Uh, we'll have significant landscaping, uh, we'll have mounding, we'll have fencing issues there. Uh, we'll have a lot of things to present to you in a final design solution. And I think you'll be happy with it. It'll be an undulated edge. You will not have a forty-five-degree berm with a wall on top. You'll have a very soft, it'll read golf, it'll feel golf, but to eliminate the, the term berm is what we're most insensitive about right now. View corridor is fine, we'll deal with that.
I think Mr. Matthews wants to give you that flexibility, but just be mindful that, uh, it will come back to us and, and that we'll want to have the, the feel that you, uh, that you've indicated it's going to have, that it is a golf course.
And then one other comment, I guess, from the design committee on the, on the timeframe of the hotel, the prob- the very real problem is in the development of the site is, um, five years down the line from today, and we're starting construction this year, um, we're going to need to know exactly what's going on in that area, that, that part of the project. And if we don't, we're a little fearful that it becomes a no man's land and it's held in reserve and we, we don't want to do that. We want to integrate it into the project. We want it to be a good, positive part of the project. We're working very hard, as you heard the principal say, towards making that a great hotel site. But if it doesn't happen, we'd like to know well before eight years from now. Yes, the golf course will take two years. We wait five years, that'll be seven. So I, we, we prefer the language that says five years from the start of construction in the golf course. That's what we were hoping for. We don't want seven years. We prefer the five from the start of construct, uh, because the golf course, because we're going to have this project designed in that timeframe. We'd hate to have to hold off that piece for some unknown land use. And I think it's reasonable to bring the timeframe within the reality of designing for a future planned land development project. And that's why we're concerned.
I, I think the, and I understand, uh, five years is a long time in a, or, or actually not a very long time in a project like this, it's going to go by fairly quickly. Um, um, and it is from the completion of the golf course. I think that, that if I could speak on behalf of the city council who's told me nothing, um, I, I, I suspect they're interested in transient and occupancy tax and anything you can do to attract a hotel and design a hotel in there, I, I think would be, um, well-received. Um, and with as much residential as you have, if that doesn't work out, uh, this, it, it, you know, it's, my sense is this would be the last place you'd go, uh, anyways. But I, 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 I think the council feels fairly strongly about that and I think we better leave it there or they won't approve it.
All right, is that the completion that I'm...
So I'm at, I'm at five years at the completion of the golf course. And that completes my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews.
Watch out for my golf balls.
And a second by Ms. Morantz. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Grinch.
Question for Doug on this issue. Could the applicant, five years from now, come back and say, "These conditions have changed"? Or has this become locked and stone-based on?
Yes.
Okay.
They can always come back, can't they? They can come back in two years and say, "There's a fundamental change. Please give us some relief. There's no, there's no assurance they'd get it, but they certainly can ask."
Actually, they'll probably come back to the council meeting here in a few weeks and give it a try then and...
In two weeks, right?
And then they can start the cycle that you just... Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Please.
Just so I understand, the, uh, there was a dialogue about bikeways and being able to, to bicycle onsite. I did not hear that in the motion, other than the, the bikeway. Now, I, I'm not sure what you meant.
My recollection is that Mr. Matthews said that the proposal that the, uh, staff put forth should stay in without...
That, that the regional bikeway and that would be along the east side, but it would not necessarily tie back into the project. Except maybe temporarily, um, maybe on the east side, back down to San Joaquin, although I'd have some concerns about that design.
And, and is there not a bikeway along Genoautry Trail?
Yes.
So, so that one too.
I, I think we're on the same page now. But I, I, I think they, they don't, uh, want, uh, to compromise their project for the bikeway. And that's, I think that's fair. I, I'll have it worked out in the design. But, but I don't want to give up the bikeway or the equestrian trail because there's so few and they're important.
Any further comments? Roll call vote then, please, Michelle.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Clatchell?
All right, motion carries unanimously. And, uh, gentlemen, we look forward to your proceeding. We're happy to see you here and, uh, we think there'll be much success. All right, the, uh, only, uh, remaining item on the agenda is, uh, commission staff reports requests. Uh, Mr. Evans, do you have anything from your end?
Um, Mr. Chairman, the only one is the council approved the, uh, the budget for next year last week. And in their discussions, they, uh, uh, agreed with the city manager's recommendation to freeze up two positions in development-related services. The first one is an associate civil engineer, uh, in engineering that deals with private development projects, um, and then also an assistant planner. So, uh, we've started the process to, um, bring ba- us back up to full, uh, full speed. And the good news in engineering is they actually have an eligibility list ready to go and, uh, they've gotten some good word from their top candidates. So, um, we, we suggested that the first one, uh, be the engineering position, uh, because right now that's probably the, the known bottleneck, uh, with the amount of activity that we have. Um, the rest of the budget was, was pretty straightforward, uh, no significant changes and, and we're in pretty good shape for next year. Uh, going in, we know that we're probably going to be asked to hold back on, on certain expenditures, uh, even though money was put in the budget, but it will not affect the planning commission, primarily staff-related issues.
Very good. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Ms. Morantz?
Thank you for whoever got the couch removed.
A grappling hook and a rope.
With that then, meeting adjourned.